All right, thanks Brian. And welcome everybody to this April 11, 2022, meeting of the Homewood City Council. I believe we have a few proclamations tonight to start with, so I'll hand it over to Mr. Mayor.
We do, thank you so much. We actually have three. They're all for the Homewood Environmental Commission and people that I believe are rolling off or stepping down, but we certainly want to recognize all of their time and work on the commission. So if I could have Amber Custos, Matt Rich, and Marcy Miller, please join me up front. That would be great. And I will, as always, face you guys and not the council. They don't have to look at my beautiful face all the time. But we'll do these individually and then we'll take pictures if you guys are interested. If you're not, I completely understand. So this, these are proclamations again for the Homewood Environmental Commission. So whereas Amber Custos has served four years on the Homewood Environmental Commission, whereas Ms. Custos has selflessly devoted her knowledge, time, and talents as an advocate for our city, and whereas the mayor and Homewood City Council appreciate the vital role played by those individuals who has local board members establish policies to ensure an efficient, effective city system, and whereas board members serve as a voice that enables our community to preserve local management and control of our city along with ensuring compliance with state and federal law, whereas Ms. Custos term of service, excuse me, Ms. Custos' term of service on the Homewood Environmental Commission is coming to an end, she is being honored by friends and board members who are deeply appreciative of her contributions to the city during the years. And whereas Ms. Custos will be missed by her fellow board members, she plans to spend time promoting the Homewood Environmental Commission and spending time with family and friends. Now therefore I, Patrick McCloskey, Mayor of the City of Homewood, Alabama, do hereby express my sincere appreciation and thanks to Amber Custos for her contributions to the city and highly commend her for the manner in which she has carried out her responsibilities as a member of the Homewood Environmental Commission. So, thank you very much. And that one is yours. I'll save you for last. I don't know if that makes sense. That's right. So this is for Ms. Miller. Whereas Marcy Miller has served three years on the Homewood Environmental Commission, and whereas Ms. Miller has selflessly devoted her knowledge, time, and talents as an advocate for our city, whereas the mayor and the Homewood City Council appreciate the vital role played by those individuals as local board members who establish policies to ensure an efficient and effective city system, whereas board members serve as a voice that enables our community to preserve local management and control of our city along with ensuring compliance with state and federal laws, whereas Ms. Miller's term of service on the Homewood Environmental Commission is ending, she is being honored by friends and board members who are deeply appreciative of her contributions to the city during the years, and whereas Ms. Miller will be missed by her fellow board members, she plans to spend time promoting the Homewood Environmental Commission and spending time with family and friends. Now therefore I, Patrick McCloskey, Mayor of the City of Homewood, Alabama, do hereby express my sincere appreciation and thanks to Marcy Miller for her contributions to the city and highly commend her for the manner in which she has carried out her responsibilities as a member of the Homewood Environmental Commission. So thank you, Ms. Miller. And last but certainly not least, Mr. Rich, it's always fun having you up here. You didn't wear your awesome t-shirt this time.
That's right.
Whereas Matt Rich has served four years on the Homewood Environmental Commission, and whereas Mr. Rich has selflessly devoted his knowledge, time, and talents as an advocate for our city, whereas the mayor and Homewood City Council appreciate the vital role played by those individuals as local board members who establish policies to ensure an efficient and effective city system, and whereas board members serve as a voice that enables our community to preserve local management and control of our city along with ensuring compliance with state and federal laws, whereas Mr. Rich's term of service on the Homewood Environmental Commission is ending, he is being honored by friends and board members who are deeply appreciative of his contributions to the city during his years, whereas Mr. Rich will be missed by his fellow board members, he also plans to spend time promoting the Homewood Environmental Commission and spending time with family and friends. Now therefore I, Patrick McCloskey, Mayor of the City of Homewood, Alabama, do hereby express my sincere appreciation and thanks to Matt Rich for his contributions to the city and highly commend him for the manner in which he has carried out his responsibilities as a member of the Homewood Environmental Commission. So thank you guys. Thank you all. Very good. Thank you. Your phone's not good enough, Andrew.
Well, I think they're coming back. Well, I hope they're coming back.
If y'all don't come back, it's gonna be y'all.
Amber, you coming back to take this picture?
All right. You guys all stay together. That's perfect.
Let me get y'all.
One, two, three. One, two, three. Oh, those are some good ones.
All right. Thank you guys so much. We do appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And with that, I will go ahead and call, oop, call the meeting to order. That's okay. Yeah, no problem. So we've got one other thing that we'll do real quick. We have Ruth Robinson, who is a candidate for circuit judge. Ms. Robinson, if you want to come on up and tell us about yourself.
Good evening, Homewood City Council. Thank you for your service. It's good to be here. I'm a, I've been a resident of Homewood for nearly all my life. I now live up the street in Vestavia, so I'm not too far away. But I consider that Homewood is my home, you know, my original home in Birmingham anyway. I went to Homewood High School and have a lot of friends still in Homewood, and it's a sweet, sweet town. It's growing vastly. I'm running for circuit court judge in place 20. It's a domestic relations position. It's the judge that grants divorce and divvies of the assets determines custody in certain situations where people can't agree. I know divorce from a professional and a personal level. I have children that have gone through that, and I do believe that it has to be all about the kids in a divorce. So I want people to put the kids first, and that's why I'm running, and I appreciate your time tonight. I don't want to take up much, much more of your time, but I do have a website and I'm pretty easy to find, so if any of you guys have questions, please feel free to look me up and shoot me an email. I'm gonna leave my, my push cards here, and I appreciate everybody's vote on May the 24th. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again. All right, so now I will actually call the meeting to order, and we will start with an invocation from Counselor Smith, and we'll follow that with the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone will please stand.
If y'all bow your heads and pray with me. Good and gracious God, as we come to you in this most holy of weeks, waiting in the darkness and in the shadow of the cross, we look forward with hope to the light of your resurrection and your victory over death. We pray that you would bring healing, wholeness, and peace to our broken and warring world. We pray that your unconditional love would flow to us and through us, out into the world, so that it would bring comfort and give hope to others. Thank you for all of your abundant gifts and love, and help us to share those gifts with all those who we come in contact with. In your most high and holy name, I pray. Amen.
Everyone will please face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Counselor Smith. Ms. Salter, if you will, please call roll.
Yes, sir. Counselor Gaultney?
Here.
Counselor Geer?
Here.
Counselor Alamon?
Here.
Counselor Wolverton?
Present.
Counselor Sims?
Here.
Counselor Jones?
Here.
Counselor Smith?
Here.
Counselor Nels?
Here.
Counselor Andrus?
Here.
Counselor Harden?
Here.
And President Wyatt?
Here.
Got a full house.
Thank you very much. All right, next is the reading of the minutes from our meeting of March 28, 2022. I would entertain a motion to dispense with the reading and approval of those minutes.
Motion.
Second.
Motion for Mr. Wolverton, second for Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to 0. Next, we have board vacancies. We, I'll start with the beautification board vacancies we have. We do have an applicant for Ward 1, which is Sam Lloyd, make sure I do this right. And Ward 3, Lindsay Culver, and I believe those are the only applicants that we've had for those two positions. So would you like to make a motion with regard to those?
Yes, thank you. I would make a motion that we appoint Sam Lloyd, Ward 1, and Lindsay Culver, Ward 3, for the beautification board.
All right, we have a motion from Mr. Sims. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Geer. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to 0. Ms. Salter, if you will let those two know, and send them our congratulations.
Yes, sir. We're gonna reopen that.
Yeah, so we've got two other positions on the beautification board, Ward 2 and an at-large position that we will need to reopen. For two weeks, Mr. Sims? Okay, so we will reopen that for two weeks, which will bring us to... Yes, thank you. So we'll close that at 4:30 on April 25th. All right, we also, there's the Ward 3 Board of Education position closed today. We have five applicants.
And the 4:30 is important because we received one at 4:30.
At 4:30.
Zero. Seriously. I mean, I was like, what?
So we have, we have five applicants. We can talk later in the meeting, I think, about scheduling interviews for those, because we will need to appoint that at the next meeting, but we'll, we'll turn to our Ward 3 reps at the end of the meeting to talk about scheduling those interviews. All right, I think that's it for board vacancies. We do have one addition to the agenda tonight. This will be added to other new business. It is 080422. It's a request for letter of non-objection for a special event ABC license for the Homewood Athletic Foundation's Corna Palooza. This item will be brought to us by myself, and we'll deal with that on other new business. All right, that gets us to the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda.
No second.
Second. But I realized I just skipped approving the agenda, the whole, the amended agenda, didn't I? That's my fault, because I forgot I amended it.
Motion.
Thank you. Mr. Wolverton makes a motion for approval of the amended agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Gaultney. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So that's approved, 11 to 0. Now I would entertain a motion.
Motion.
For approval of consent agenda by Mr. Wolverton.
Second.
Second again by Mr. Gaultney. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to 0 as well, which brings us to other new business. The first item, 010222, request to authorize the mayor to sign fiscal year 2122 BJCTA contract and pay first two quarters, brought to us by Robert Brigat and Melody Salter. This has already been reported out from Finance. We were just waiting on the corrected contracts, which I believe we have now received and don't have any, it looks correct. So I believe, Mr. Jones, remind me, did we have a, we had a favorable recommendation, so we already have a motion from Finance? Is that correct?
We do, but I feel like since, yeah, I would move to approve.
All right, so we have a motion from Mr. Jones. Second from Ms. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is 11 to 0, and we resolution 2251. All right, next item, 070322, public hearing set for tonight for consideration of declaring the property located at 102 Green Springs Highway a public nuisance due to a violation of ordinance 1098 that are on private property, brought to us by Scott Cook of our Code Enforcement Department. And we will start with a report from Public Safety. Mr. Gaultney.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. After hearing from the zoning administrator, Mr. Cook, the Public Safety Committee voted 5 to 0 to send this item back to council without recommendation pending the public hearing.
All right, and so with that, I will open the public hearing, and we'll see Mr. Cook is here with us. If you will, just let us know where we stand on this.
Okay. The first letter went, it's owned by Malone and Hyde. This is the old AutoZone property at 102 Green Springs Highway. It's vacant since, probably now for a year. First letter went out on January 26th, giving the property owner until February 20th to come into compliance. Nothing was done on the property. They did receive their certified letter. I got receipt back from that. Then we came to you and we had a public hearing set for tonight, and on March 24th, I sent them notice of the public hearing tonight. Have not received back the receipt where they received it, but that's not unusual. And as of today, I haven't heard, had no contact from them, and the property still is, is in pretty bad shape. I think we see the pictures. We've actually got three dumpsters. I don't, you know, two roll-offs, one in the front and one in the back, and...
They're all still there as of today?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, is there anyone else here to speak for or against this item? Not then I will close the public hearing and ask if there are any comments or questions from council.
I would make a motion to declare the property a public nuisance.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Ms. Andrus. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Sorry, any opposed? All right, so that is 11 to 0, and that will be resolution 2252.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes, I'm sorry, Ms. Wolver.
Go ahead, it's all right. So I just wanted to clarify, I believe we talked about also sending this to...
The abatement board?
The abatement board as well for the openings in the building and...
Right. Yeah, and I think it's working its way through that process.
Separate issue, but yes.
Sure, yeah, that's what I thought I remembered.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. All right, next item, 090322, public hearing set for tonight for consideration to rezone 3450 Manor Drive from R5 attached dwelling unit district to R6 attached dwelling unit district, brought to us by the applicant and owner, LMS Brookwood Property LP, as a means to correct and mitigate the current legal non-conforming status of the property based on the number of units on the site and other development criteria to a more appropriate and higher density zoning classification in conjunction with a required companion development plan. This comes to us from the Planning Commission with a vote of 5 to 0 to 1 with a favorable recommendation of the rezone. And we will start with a report from Planning and Development. Ms. Andrus.
Yes, the committee met last week and voted 5 to 0 to refer this item back to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing. The motion was made by Counselor Sims and seconded by Counselor Wolverton.
All right, thank you very much. So I will open the public hearing as to this item. Mr. Smith, do you want to start us off?
Okay. I'll introduce Tripp Galloway here to represent LMS, and he'll give the...
Mr. Chair. I've learned I need to sign in and not to take the chair.
past acquired same as the apartments, 274 units. I call it across 31 from the Shades Valley Wides, actually probably a little further north. And the request here is to, it's twofold, actually, and as Mr. Kendrick had pointed out at the last meeting we had, that there, there's a development plan that must be addressed, considered independent of the rezoning, and then the rezoning would be considered, depending on how the development plan goes. But the development plan is tied to the rezoning in that we're presently zoned R5. The request is to rezone to R6 tied to a development plan. And the reason for doing this is that the new owner seeks to convert one of the swimming pool areas to an exercise facility, and then in addition to that, expend $15 million to upgrade the exterior and interior of the units on the property and to upgrade the caliber of apartment community that would be there. Because of the non-conforming aspects of the property, in order for it to be able to be rebuilt to what it is now in the, you know, unforeseen event of a fire, tornado, earthquake, what have you, that, so that for the financing purposes and the ownership's comfort level, they asked that it be rezoned to R6, so they would have the assurance that this could be rebuilt. If a casualty occurred, which they don't seek, they don't want to rebuild 275 units, they want to rebuild what they have. And that is, grants them the assurance that they seek from 270, from R5 to R6. It's got some win-win aspects to it, because from the city's standpoint, the city is being assured this is what will be on the property. So it sort of takes off the table the possibility of somebody trying to come in and rezone it or do something different that the city may not seek, and because it's got the site plan approval with the development plan. So we submit that it's got win-win components to it, and that's what we seek to do.
And let me just make sure, I think I'm saying the same thing you are, but just make sure I am. There aren't any additional apartment units coming as a result of this?
That is correct.
This is, currently, the number of units is non-conforming.
Correct, and one is a 400-unit efficiency apartment, and it is the only one that is too small relative to the zoning, and that one would stay. There would be no other units that would be shrunk to create more efficiencies and say some behemoth units. It's same configuration.
Okay. Right, and so then the development plan would then restrict what could happen within the future or with regard to this property unless some future council chooses to change it.
Correct.
This would define what was, what could be put on that property.
Correct.
Okay.
And that's part of the win-win aspect, is the, from the dais, there should be assurance that this is what this property will be, bless you, that it would not morph into something else without the council's consent to same.
Okay. Go ahead and ask.
Just, just for the record, I guess, be helpful, just briefly to highlight what, what exactly is non-conforming currently with the zoning?
Well, I would ask Mr. Smith to help me on this, but it's the, there are parking, slight parking deficiencies, there are the unit density, there's the one unit that is too, too small, it's the 400 unit instead of the 700. The, again, I think our parking is slightly deficient, and I don't, there may be a height issue.
I think there's a setback issue.
I'm sorry, it's, it's a peculiar shaped property. One, if one's familiar with it, it's kind of down in the hole. You know, it's, it's not a real attractive way to say it, but it's kind of what it is.
Sure, yeah, I know.
Yeah. And so the one concern we wanted to make sure that would be addressed is whether any adjoining owners were objecting to a redo, albeit not changing the footprint except for the, the swimming pool area being converted to an indoor facility. So arguably, that would be an enhancement, because that's less noise and such. But we, to our knowledge, no such adjoining neighbor has come forward and said, "We object."
And R6 basically allows for everything that you just mentioned. Is that correct?
R6 is, is a rezoning by development plan.
Okay. So it's basically a custom.
Mr. Sims?
Yes, I just had a question about the, looking at the R6 regs, the height is ultimately determined by the development plan as well. Will there be any change in the height of the structures?
There will not, the, the, except as to the creation of new structure where the swimming pool, A, one of the two swimming pools was, will be constructed. So that will go from effectively zero to a conforming site approved facility by the city.
Mr. Jones?
Which pool is being replaced? Is it the one in the middle?
It's the one in the middle.
Okay, okay, that's what I thought. I just wanted to confirm. That's, thank you.
All right, let me, let me see if I can get this out of the way. Is there anyone else here to speak for or against this item? Not then I will close the public hearing and ask if there are any other questions or comments from council. If not, Mr. Kendrick, can you give us a first reading?
Yes, the first thing we need to do, though, is approve the development plan before we adopt the ordinance.
Thank you.
But I can certainly read it if you'd like.
Yeah.
The ordinance is, ordinance to amend section 1602 of the City of Homewood entitled "Zoning Ordinance and Zoning Map," whereas the Planning Commission has favorably recommended the City Council that the current property be rezoned from its current zoning classification R5 attached dwelling unit and rezoned to R6 attached dwelling unit. Whereas the City Council has determined and set a public hearing for April 11, 2022, now therefore being ordained by the City Council that the following described property at 3450 Manor Drive, parcel ID 280018101425, with a legal description attached to Exhibit A be rezoned from its current zoning classification R5 to R6 pursuant to the development plan attached to Exhibit B. Section 2, that after the enactment of this ordinance, that the uses and restrictions applicable to R6 would be, apply this property subject to the control of the property as permitted by the development plan. Section 3, that April 11th at 6:00 PM is the time and place for the public hearing, which time the public is provided opportunity to speak for or against such proposed rezoning. Section 4, that City Clerks given notice as required by law of this public hearing. Section 5, any part of provision or is declared to be unconstitutional or invalid by Court of Competent Jurisdiction, all other parts of provision of the ordinance shall remain in full force and effect. Section 6, ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its adoption by the City Council and approval by the mayor's otherwise becoming law.
All right, so first, we need to approve the development plan. Mr. Kendrick, that's just a resolution, is that correct?
It's just, just as a motion.
Just a vote?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Development plan is attached as Exhibit B to the ordinance, but the process in our zoning ordinance is, the development plan has to be approved prior to any action on the zoning ordinance.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion for approval of the development plan?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Harden, second by Ms. Andrus. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is 11 to 0. And so now we'll deal with the ordinance that Mr. Kendrick just gave us the first reading of. We'll start with a motion for unanimous consent.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Ms. Andrus, and a roll call vote, please, Ms. Salter.
Yes, sir. Counselor Gaultney?
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Geer?
Yes.
Counselor Alamon?
Yes.
Counselor Wolverton?
Yes.
Counselor Sims?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Nels?
Yes.
Counselor Andrus?
Yes.
Counselor Harden?
Yes.
And President Wyatt?
Yes, all right, so that is 11 to 0. Now we entertain a motion for approval.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Nels, was that you? And second by Ms. Smith, and another roll call vote, please, Ms. Salter.
Counselor Gaultney?
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Geer?
Yes.
Counselor Alamon?
Yes.
Counselor Wolverton?
Yes.
Counselor Sims?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Nels?
Yes.
Counselor Andrus?
Yes.
Counselor Harden?
Yes.
And President Wyatt?
Yes, all right, so that is 11 to 0, and that will be ordinance 2832. Thank you, Mr. Galloway.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, next item, 210322, public hearing set for April 25th, 2022, at 6:00 PM for consideration for condemnation of the dwelling structure at 2757 B. Montgomery Street, brought to us by Wyatt Pugh of our Building Department. This will be carried over to our next meeting on the 25th. Next item, 220322, public hearing set for tonight for consideration of a sign variance at 2834 18th Street South, brought to us by Mick Britton of Nadoo and King Fisher Signs and Wyatt Pugh of our Building Department. And we will start with a report from Special Issues. Ms. Smith?
Yes, committee met last week and voted 5 to 0 to refer this item out back to the full council without a recommendation pending the public hearing tonight. Motion was made by Ms. Andrus and second above Ms. Geer.
All right, so with that, I will open the public hearing on this item and see if
All right, we were approached by Nado as they were moving from their present location to the new location in the old Ca-Haba Cycle Store, and they wanted us to put a new domed lettering main building sign up. We're aware that the regulations require maximum letter size of 24 inches, so we consequently designed a sign with 24-inch height, but it's kind of lost in this vast expanse of the fascia of the building, and the good folks at Nado asked us if we would do another design where the maximum letter size was 24 inches in the Nado, but kept their artichoke logo in proportion, which is what we have done, to seek a variance to get that approved.
All right, Mr. Pugh, you may need to verify this for us, so the, the request is for one variance for the, or two?
No, this is for a single variance request for the height of that one character, the artichoke logo.
Okay, all right. All right, is there anyone else here to speak for or against this item?
Great artichoke debate, once again. It means peace and prosperity, it's just, like Mick said, it was lost in the original if we kept it at the 24, so we've just completed painting, which I think looks really good, and we, the back looks amazing, and it's pretty much comparable to the back, just in a different format, so.
And just for the record, will you give us your name and sign on the sheet there?
Jessica Macken, 203 Windsor Drive.
Thank you.
Or whatever that is.
We know where to find you, it's okay. All right, anyone else here to speak for or against this item? Now, I'll close the public hearing and ask if there are any comments from council.
We talked about in the meeting last week, none of it is lit, it's not illuminated at all, but can you remind me of the size of the artichoke? I just can't remember.
63.
And I can't see that well.
Yeah, I can't either, I can't even see your face. 63.
That's like me, I'm like, what?
Did you say 63 inches?
Yes.
63 inches, yes.
So it's five feet tall.
Well, have you, I don't know.
Well, and that's my height, so it's really not that high.
Well played, well played.
She's quick.
And I will say.
I mean, bandwagon's probably like, way taller.
And I will say, that, and you're right, that is a large space on the front of the building now with, it's just, there's a lot of space there, so I think, I can see what you're saying about the fact that it was just kind of lost in the vast expanse of.
Yeah, we tried to keep the, it was like a circle that I guess was original to the building when it was a movie theater.
Yeah.
So we kept that and trimmed it out as well.
Right.
And so if we, which I don't even think's in the, yeah, so it would actually move over to the left somewhere the grid is in the facade.
Yeah.
So we just wanted to keep the integrity of everything that we possibly could. Anyhow, the artichoke.
And I will say we've been.
Peace and prosperity.
Yeah, and we've been, I went with Eddie from the Historic Preservation Commission over to see what y'all are doing, and I really appreciate what y'all have done to try to keep the building in its original condition.
Thank you.
Good work.
Do you by any chance have a picture of the sign on the back? Just to remind us of what we passed just a few weeks ago?
Give me a second, I'll look for it.
Brian, would you still have that?
I probably have one of my.
Yeah, hang on.
Jennifer, excuse me, oops, this Jennifer.
What ding is that?
In addition to that, is it Jennifer?
Jessica.
Jessica, sorry.
Never.
So what is the height, do you know the height of the artichoke on the back side?
Mick, do you?
No, I do not.
And we got a variance for that as well, so I'm thinking it's pretty close.
We think it was five feet.
They gave a variance for the back side.
And we didn't really talk numbers on that as much because we were reusing a sign, I think, if I'm remembering correctly.
Yeah, I think we did talk about the measurements, because I think it was slightly more than.
Yeah, it was definitely a size variance.
Can you pass that around so we can all see it? Can you pass it around so we can all just walk it around?
We won't steal your phone.
Yeah, we won't, we won't search through your phone.
We'll think about it.
Okay, and so, and you don't know what the height of that is?
I probably have it in the email if I can just.
Yeah.
Basically, they took that off, the whole building aside.
All right, while we're doing that, Mr. Jones, did you have a question?
Oh, it's kind of an elementary question, but I've heard your business pronounced 15 different ways. Can you pronounce it for me so that I know?
Play-Doh.
Play-Doh?
Nado.
Nado?
Yeah.
Nado, okay.
So just think it, Play-Doh, or whatever, we hear everything, so it's fine, it really is. I mean, I hear Jennifer and Rebecca.
Thank you, thank you for that, that's very helpful. Now I know.
It's based in India, isn't it?
So we import from India and Indonesia, the, we're looking at some other countries right now because of the shipping crisis, it's primarily India, but everything is handmade, so, and it comes by 40-foot containers, and, and we've been, obviously, I'm from Homewood, I graduated Patrick, you know, I wanted to keep the business here, and I feel like it was a good move just to go down the street and get a thousand more square feet and be in the heart of it all, and I love it.
What's the material for the sign, I'm curious?
It'll be acrylic.
All right, any other questions or comments? Mr. Wolverton?
Just, just a quick question, so from the picture on the back, right, we, we allowed the artichoke to kind of be offset, but it's in line with the lettering, right? But it's bigger. I guess I was wondering, it looked like the original design for the front was similar, but it was all 24, so I guess I was just wondering if it was considered, if you guys considered the larger artichoke but still in line with the lettering? Does that make sense? Similar to how the back side was?
Isn't it 24 there?
Does that make sense? So the artichoke would be larger, but the font would still be 24, but it would, instead of artichoke being above, it would be adjacent to.
So the, so it actually is 24.
The lettering?
Yeah, I think he's asking like.
Right, I'm just talking about the placement of the artichoke, so that.
Oh, I see, so you're saying.
So that the base of it was in line with the bottom of the lettering, but it would still extend above, the artichoke itself would still be a little bit larger.
I see what you're saying, yeah, yeah, keep it 24 and then put it back up.
Similar to the sign on the back.
Yeah. I mean, if that's.
I was just curious, because that's how the first sign was presented.
Opposite of what she just said.
When you say the first sign, what, which one do you mean?
The first sign that you presented, you said this was our original design, 24 inches, everything was 24 inches, including the artichoke.
Yeah.
The new sign, the lettering is 24 inches, but the artichoke is now above and much larger.
Yes.
Versus making the artichoke a little bit.
That was, that was at the request of Nado, because that is their logo, that's what their logo really looks like, and they wanted to keep everything in proportion to the, to their full logo.
Gotcha.
And it does, and it much better fills that vast space.
I just thought I saw the picture from the back sign.
Right.
Being everything is in line.
It was as well, that's the old sign, but that was probably, I'm guessing, a product of the space available.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Mr. Alamon, second by Mr. Sims. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Oops, sorry, 10 to 1, and that will be.
It's too big.
Okay.
You should have done Nai or Do.
All right, so that'll be, that vote is 10 to 1, and will be Resolution 2253. Thank you. Next item, 230322, public hearing set for tonight for consideration of a secondary front yard fence variance at 625 Hambaw Avenue, brought to us by Raj Bhishani and Natasha Mira, who are the owners, as well as Wyatt Pugh, and we will start with a report from Special Issues. Ms. Smith?
Yes, committee met last week, voted 5 to 0 to further this item back out to the full council without a recommendation pending tonight's public hearing. Motion was made by Ms. Gier and second by Mr. Alamon.
All right, thank you. So with that, I will open this public hearing. See, we have the applicants up here, so if you will, be sure you sign in, both sign in, but if you'll just go ahead and tell us about your application.
Yes, so I think, I believe we have a picture, so our, we have a very oddly shaped lot, so, can we go one more? Perfect, okay, so essentially, our lot is a peninsula, the White House is ours, and the city owns the first 20 feet of our yard, and so.
The side yard.
The side yard, so as you can see, the side yard is quite large, and especially compared to our backyard, which is fairly small. Per the current guidelines, the fence has to be 15 feet from the property line, which would leave us with only about four to five feet of yard on the side, and because that's the majority of our yard, we were hoping that the council would reconsider and allow us to place a fence on the property line. So this, essentially, the fence would be 20 feet from the street, which appears to be, I think, plenty of space if later there was a sidewalk to be placed or something like that, we would have a gate going the distance of the driveway and connecting to the backyard, since the backyard is fairly small. The other aspect is when it rains, the backyard is downsloped, I believe there's a picture of the cove as well, and so it ends up flooding pretty dramatically, and so that space is pretty unusable. We have two dogs, which is the main reason we would want a fence in the first place.
All right, thank you very much. Is there anyone else here to speak for or against this item? If not, then I will close the public hearing and ask if there are any questions or comments from council.
And I just want to clarify, Wyatt, it's the setback variance, and it's also a secondary front yard fence variance, right, because it's, we're calling it a corner lot, which it's really not a corner lot, it's more of like a middle of two-street lot, or whatever that would be called.
Yeah, it technically is a corner lot, so yes, it would be a setback variance, they could have a fence in that side yard.
Right.
Secondary front yard, I guess you'd call it, but it would need to have 15-foot setback, so this is a variance to allow, a variance request of 15 feet to allow that fence to be on the property line rather than setback 15.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So it's a single, a single.
Just one, okay, all right, that was my confusion.
Mr. Jones?
Can we see the schematic? I thought, didn't we have?
Those were some pictures at the home. Brian, do you still have that exhibit?
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, give me a second.
Hang on.
I don't, I don't have it on me, so I just wanted to see that from last week.
Hey, if you want to see this, I'm willing to.
Yeah, that'd be great, I just wanted to, I was trying to visualize.
Pass that down here, too, please.
Okay.
And didn't y'all, y'all are going to put a gate over the driveway, right? You said that.
From the front building?
Yeah, it's 20, it's about 20 feet.
About 20 feet from the front building.
Okay.
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
I would go ahead and make a motion to approve.
Motion for Ms. Smith, second for Mr. Alamon, Mr. Harden and Ms. Andrus, so now y'all are looking at it, are y'all ready, or, I don't want to rush you.
Give me just one second.
Wow.
All right, any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to 0, and will be Resolution 2254. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next item, 240322, public hearing set for tonight for consideration of a front yard fence variance at 101 Acton Avenue, brought to us by Kirby Ferris and Wyatt Pugh. We'll start with another report from Special Issues. Ms. Smith?
Same song, second verse, committee met 5 to 0, last week, voted 5 to 0 to further this item back out to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing tonight. Motion was made by Ms. Andrus and second by Ms. Gier.
All right, thank you very much. So with that, I will open this public hearing, and I see Mr. Ferris has already taken the podium, so if you will just let us know what your application's about.
Thank you, President, and thank you for your time tonight, I appreciate, I know that you have a lot of very important things, more important than my fence, but thank you for listening to us. I want to start by telling you, or showing you what, what my wife and I began with, and she asked me to be sure and tell y'all that these are weed trees, is what she calls them, on the left-hand side.
That can't be good.
This sidewalk is an area where people farm a lot and jobbers that come to visit. When I've tried, when I've asked to get that cut back, it's just nuts, and behind this is a parking area that we've never been able to use because these trees and the larger tree behind it drop a sap, and you can't leave your cars back there because it'll get covered in that sap. So what we, and then, so what we were hoping to do is put a fence here, and then this fence that you see on the right-hand side of the property is a lower setting fence that goes down in Down Car Avenue, and that fence was in disrepair, and we wanted to replace that fence. So, starting sort of with the right-hand side of the property, the fence that existed there looked like this, this running down car, so it was in pretty significant disrepair. And this fence, oh, it kind of looks pretty good, the two-by-four supporting, those boards were all rotten and needed to be replaced. So, we started that project, unbeknownst to me, we didn't have a permit or anything that we were supposed to do, so I apologize to you for that, I didn't know, I thought my contractor would know that, but apparently they didn't. And there was some question on the fencing on the right-hand side of the property about visibility, so I took this photograph from the stop wall on Acton, looking back down car, and as long as I, as long as I might keep this tree right here cut at that angle that it's cut down, that visibility is okay. I do understand that where this fence was made and feed on the driveway, so, Mr. Pugh would have to help me. As I understand it, we may need to set that fence back some to be in compliance, which wouldn't be any problem because we haven't done anything significantly there yet. And then on the left-hand side of the property, to get rid of my wife's weed trees, we, we constructed this fence, we taken out that big tree in the back and constructed this fence. Our goal was to plant shrubs in here, because we'd seen several fences in the neighborhood constructed that way, the back hall, maybe three things, the sidewalk, a little bit of the shrub in the front, and two or three things happened with that, getting rid of those trees and getting that fence up, would enable us to park in the lot behind here to guard cars off, which I think helps everybody. The other thing is the roots on these trees, it caused a lot of disrepair in the sidewalk, so we're hoping by getting rid of those trees, if the city sees fit, that those can be ground out and rooted, create the situation that, that is there now with the sidewalk buckled. I'm not completely clear on all the ordinances we violated, I apologize to you for those, but we are seeking a variance to finish this project up, and some of the really attractive fencing that we've seen, this was one that my wife really liked, where they had constructed a fence similar, pretty close to sidewalk, and then put some shrubs in there around it. So, we feel like, I mean, we haven't approached this the right way, and again, I apologize for that, that it's really not contrary to the public interest, and in fact, I think in many respects, it's better for us all. My neighbors were very appreciative of getting rid of the trees and the fence, and, and our sign that we've still got on our door, a couple have stopped by and said, I hope they do give you a variance so that y'all can finish that, because our neighbors seem to like it as much as my wife does, so I hope that y'all will give consideration to providing us a variance.
Let me ask a couple of questions, and Mr. Pugh, I'm probably going to need your, or Mr. Ferris and I are probably going to need your help on this. First, what variances are we considering here?
All right, and, and Brian, I just forwarded you the exhibit that I sent you last week as well, if you could pull that up, it would be helpful, but there are three variance requests. One is a variance to allow a fence to extend beyond the predominant front wall of the living space. The second request is a variance to allow a fence in both front yards, the, which would be really to allow, to allow a fence to extend beyond the predominant front wall of the living space in the secondary front yard. The second, the third request is a setback variance of 15 feet to allow the front yard fence to extend to the front property line. So, yeah, there, hopefully this makes it a little easier to see, the yellow line represents where a fence could be installed without a variance?
And the red line is the request.
Does that make sense? And the red line is the, is the request for a variance, so I hope that helps to explain what I was having difficulty.
It does?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, let me ask one more, real quick. Mr. Ferris? Mr. Ferris, you, you mentioned something about the right-of-way. And if I understood you correctly, what you were saying is you don't want to go on the right-of-way regardless of what we do. Am I understanding you correctly?
No, sir. We would be fine putting the fence back exactly where it was, but I don't want to run afoul of anything that y'all want us to do.
Sure.
But the construction of this fence down car and the, and the shorter white fence that you saw, the reconstruction of that is exactly where it was. In fact, using the exact same fencing materials.
Mr. Pugh, is any of that in the right-of-way?
No, it does not extend out into the right-of-way. It simply goes to the property line.
Just wanted to make sure we didn't need a request for that as well. So that, that's what I wanted to make sure. Ms. Smith, I'm sorry.
Let me just clarify that on, on the survey there, it shows that, that the fence does extend just a hair out in the right-of-way, but you indicated to me that you were going to pull that back a little bit. Is that right?
Obviously, we'd like to pull it back as little as possible and keep it sort of in line with the neighbor's fence, but if we need to pull it back a few.
And, and here's the thing. If it's going to go into the right-of-way, we have to do a request to work in the right-of-way also and grant you permission to do that. I don't think that's a part of this request, if I understand you correctly. So I would, if I understand you, you're proffering that if we approve this, it'll stop, it'll, you won't go into the right-of-way wherever that is. And Mr. Pugh will tell you where that is.
He'll let us know. We'll be sure not to get in the right-of-way.
Got it.
It's just a little bit.
Ms. Smith.
My, my question is about not the fence on the car side. Because honestly, I, I understand that car is a busy street and I can understand wanting to have that separation from that busy street and the sidewalk. My question is about the top picture and the fence that comes way out to the front, almost to the sidewalk. So that's already been built and that's obviously a violation. So my question is, and honestly, there's not much room to put bushes there, but if you did, we also consider bushes a front yard fence as well. So that would be like double violation. So I guess my question is more in line with that. I'm, I'm not sure, that's the part that's bothering me, honestly. Because it comes out so far in front of the house and it, I mean, it almost looks like, I don't know, it doesn't even look like it's y'all's house. It looks like it's, I, I really don't know. That's the part that's bothering me, is that top, the top. Yeah, yeah.
Am I standing on car and looking down Acton?
Yes, sir.
Yes. Like that's the sidewalk on Acton running in front of the house.
The reason we, the reason we constructed it that way is because behind that fence is a gravel parking area. And if we move that fence back in line with the property, then what will be there is gravel. Just, and it really would be unattractive. That, that's why we constructed it that way because it was the lesser of the two evils to bring it out and not have all that gravel to deal with.
Yeah, because we don't, we don't allow parking pads and they have gravel.
I was about to say, that's a violation.
It's also a violation, too. Yeah, we don't, we don't allow that as a surface for, for parking pads because of the bleed-off that you get from, from gravel. So I, I get that it's enclosed, but now it's enclosed by a fence that's in violation of our fence ordinance because it's out in front of the house. And is that, that's not, is that in our right-of-way?
I'm sorry, ma'am.
No, it, it goes all the way to his property line. His property line, if you'll look at the, the survey there really closely, you see the sidewalk and then you see that little gap between the red line. There's a few feet, so it looks like it stops on his property line.
I've got a picture of that if you'd like to see.
Yeah, would you pass it?
I'm showing the alley.
Yeah, come on.
Is there an alley between Acton and Old Spree? Is that an alley back there?
There's an alley.
Let me pass it there.
Yes, sir.
Do you access, first, do you access the vacuum from that alley?
Yes, sir. You would turn off of Acton to the right, into that alley. And then there's a, I call it a parking area. We've never been able to use it for that. Now I know I've got a concrete, it, it, the city will allow.
Or sob it.
Yes.
Mr. Jones, did you have a, I'm sorry, Mr. Harden did interrupt you. Mr. Jones, do you have a question?
Okay. Yes, sir, Mr. President. Okay. So the, the fence is, is where the red is? So you, you've already built the fence?
Yes, sir.
Illegally? And that, that depicts the red on the Acton side? And on the car side? The car side? Okay.
The car side, because that's the one that's on the ground. That's the car side. And that's the one, and it, I mean, I've driven by, the fence is like it was in pretty bad shape.
Yes, ma'am.
And again, I get, I get wanting to fence off that side of the yard just because of the busy street and sidewalk and have a little privacy and safety, but.
Okay. And then, and then, and I know you've talked about sightlines. So are you concerned about sightlines around turning with that fence, sir?
Scott, Scott was the one who actually identified this, this violation. So I'd rather you speak to this since you're here. Did you see a sightline issue?
Now, like Mr. Ferris said, the, the old fence has been there for a long time and I don't think we've ever had a traffic problem at that intersection, but it, it is tight. You have to pull up almost into the next intersection, or next street being car to actually see to the left. You know, it may be something that Mr. Hamley might need to address, see what meets the requirements for sight distance. I'm not an expert on that.
Okay. Mr. Sims?
Just had a question then, in follow-up to that. Is the corner that would basically be near the car-Acton intersection, is that the same point where the fence existing begins to infringe upon the right-of-way? I'm trying to look at this rendering.
Yes, sir.
And it looks like that's kind of where it slants currently into the right-of-way at that corner. So if we rectified it at that corner and got it out of the right-of-way, that would actually improve the sight distance, correct?
It would.
But you're not, you're not in it by much.
At the biggest.
Almost inches.
Okay.
Only out of there every day. The biggest concern has always been this tree. This tree, if it's allowed to grow, these limbs drop down, it really can't feature sight. But the, and now, there's also a neighbor's fence that's on the same line as mine. So I don't know that setting my back, but anyway, in order to protect it, it's always a good problem.
And, and that's just really the front yard fence request on the car side. Unfortunately, on the Acton side, I mean, I'm afraid that the reason we have a front yard fence variance is primarily to prevent exactly what you've constructed. Because you have, you know, two front yards and with the car side, that's where we could have that consideration due to the traffic. But for the Acton side, I mean, that's where you're, it's interrupting the, the frontage, I think, of that entire street by having that jut out into the property in that manner. That's, so I, I hate to see that you've already constructed it because I do think it's an unfortunate issue because it is a problem and, and a violation of the intent of our ordinance.
All right. Any other questions or comments? And I know this side of the dais is still waiting on that picture, but Ms. Gier.
Hi, yes. I just wanted to clarify that this area that we're talking about now, there was previously a fence there. Is that correct?
On, on the left-hand side of the house, ma'am?
The, the one that we're talking about now on.
The car side or the Acton side?
On the Acton.
I think the answer may be different.
No, ma'am. There was not a fence there. There was a, a wall of what my wife called those weed trees.
Oh, that's where the weed trees were?
Yes, ma'am. And that sort of, I think they were put there sort of as that buffer that would have.
Okay. So that new fence isn't replacing any fence?
No, ma'am.
Totally a new fence? Okay.
I will tell you this, I have a little shop of sorts back there that actually was broken into. And that was one of the reasons I really did want a fence there to obstruct the view of that, because I have had that problem on one occasion.
Again, if, if we were talking about the fence coming to the side of the house without going out in front of the house and the, and going all the way to the property line, I think that'd be one thing because you would still get the screen that you're looking for. But that is just such a, I mean, it's, it's just, it's just way out in front of the house. And, and it's, and it, like Counselor Sim says, it's exactly what we're trying to prevent with front yard fences. And we, we understand, you know, hardships and we try to take those into consideration, but it's already constructed and it's absolutely what we don't want as front yard fences go.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Okay. So we have, again, just to recap, Mr. Pugh, make sure I'm right about this. We have three variance requests, correct?
Yes, sir.
The first one is to, I'm sorry, I'm having to read sideways. A variance to allow a fence to extend beyond the predominant front line of the living space. That deals with Acton.
That's correct.
Request number two is a variance to allow a fence in both front yards. That applies to both.
That's right.
And then request number three is for a setback variance of 15 feet to allow front yard fence to extend the proper, to extend to the property line. That's the one for car.
That's correct.
All right. So if anyone wants to make a motion as to any of those variances or wants me to review the requests again, I'm happy to do that. But one, request number one is for Acton. Request number two is to have a fence in both places. And request number three is the car.
If a request, if a motion is made for three, for number three, not all three, for the number three that you just laid out, does that conclude, does that dismiss one and two, or do we have to deal with them each individually?
You can deal with them either way. They could, it could all, you can make a motion however you want to make it, but you can make the motion such that it's only as to certain variances and.
And by, and by definition, then the other two are being denied?
I, I think someone could still make a motion as to the other two if they, if, if they wanted to, but.
And, and another question. Say we approve the third to allow the fence on car, then what happens to the fence that is currently there that is not going to be approved? Or I would think, in my opinion, I'm not approving it. So I'm, I'm wondering what then happens to that fence?
I believe that that would, that it would, we would not act on it. That would be something that the fourth floor would act on, but the fence would have to come down if we do not approve the variance. But the fourth floor would be in charge of enforcing.
And the gravel lot removed.
That, well, again, that's not before us. That's, that's, that's an enforcement issue with the fourth floor. So with that, that's not something we have before us. Ms. Nelms?
And that fence can be put there, it just has to be put back along the yellow line.
No, we have to prove that as number two.
Yeah, so.
It would have to be approved. Go ahead.
Wait, 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 wait.
The yellow lines represent where a fence could go without a variance?
Yes.
So that would be allowed.
Correct.
It's hard for me to see that. Can he, I mean.
So right there, the yellow line goes right on the left top side. The yellow line is right in front of the L there.
It would go to the, it would go to the front corner of the house.
Right.
And that would be okay.
All right. I'm, I'm, there's Acton.
Brian, can you?
Do you have it? Let me.
Can you blow up the schematic?
Because I'm, I'm looking at the property from the perspective of the app I've gotten. You realize there's no backyard, so.
And that's what allows the yellow line, because it is a corner lot, the yellow, that's what allows the yellow line to be built without a variance.
So right now, he could go back, if he had not built that fence like he was, he would, he would still need a variance from us to, to build along that yellow line or not?
No.
No, no.
He can build the yellow line without us.
Then what is the second variance?
That would allow the two red lines, both of the, for him to put both red lines in there, you would have to approve a variance for both of them.
Oh.
So in other words, if you're going to do one, if, if they're, if, if he's allowed to do one and three, he has to be allowed to do two because otherwise he, he needs that variance to do both of those things. But one or three could be done by themselves without two.
I've caused a lot of trouble here.
It's okay.
Well, it's a corner lot issue.
Right. Mr. Jones, did you have another question or comment?
No, I was just going to say, I mean, we need to move on all of them and vote.
Up or down?
Up or down. As opposed to just not, not.
Not taking some up.
So, so I, I want to make sure I understand while we're doing this because this is obviously a little confusing. If, if he, if we allow the car vote number one, number three, that's giving him the setback. In other words, we're, somewhere we got to give him allowance to put a front yard fence, correct? And that's not, doesn't.
Well, well, remember, it's a corner lot. He's allowed to have two front yard fences because of the corner lot.
I thought we had to give him.
What the, what the deal is, is that by extending those in two different places, he would have to have variance number, number two that would allow both of them.
I now understand. I apologize. I thought we had to give him an allowance for a second front yard fence.
So what, what I would suggest, given what we've discussed, and if someone wants to ask more questions, that's fine, but is that we do what Mr. Jones has suggested and we take up each one individually. They will each require a positive motion. So, and I would, I would suggest that we do them in the order that they're listed here if someone is so inclined, which request number one would be the Acton Avenue portion.
The one that's already constructed.
The one that's already constructed, correct? So if there, are there?
So it's a positive motion.
Yeah, move to approve.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion to approve.
Request number one.
Request number one, which is the Acton Avenue side, the fence that's already built. That was from Mr. Jones and a second from Ms. Andrus?
No.
Ms. Smith, I'm sorry. Thank you.
But I was the third.
All right.
Mr. Jones and Ms. Smith?
Yes. Jones and Smith. All right. So the motion's in the positive, so if you want to approve it, vote yes. If you don't, vote no. All right. All in favor? Any opposed?
Aye.
All right. So that fails zero to 11. All right. Is there another motion with regard to request number two, which would seem to be a bit unnecessary because we have now denied one, which means that two doesn't really be, isn't needed anymore?
I would move to approve request number three.
Okay?
Second.
All right. So that one is Mr. Jones and seconded by Mr. Harden. This is number three.
This is number, I thought it was number two.
No, 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 because we don't have to do two.
We did, we did.
Two becomes irrelevant because we're not doing both.
Agreed.
So now we've got number three, which is the car Avenue portion.
That was already existing.
No, that was existing, but no longer is existing.
Correct.
But it was existing, it's in the.
Previous state.
In the red line.
That's right. It was.
It followed the red line for the car Avenue part. Any other questions?
But it's not, well, and sorry, just to clarify, that one was potentially in the right-of-way and he.
He's made, he's proffered that it, that it will not be in the right-of-way as Mr. Pugh lets him know where that is. Okay. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right. So that was one no, correct? Just making sure. So that is 10 to 1.[1656.25]
To Mr. Alamon?
It was, with Mr. Alamon voting no. And that will be resolution 2255. All right. And I think that does it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
And so that I understand?
Yes.
The, the fence on the left, I just have to move back in line with the house?
Correct. You do not need a variance to move it back to this yellow line. I would suggest you get with Mr. Pugh to see exactly where that line is.
We will.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the time and consideration.
Thanks, Kirby.
Appreciate it. Take care.
All right. Next item, 020521. Bid opening held on April 4, 2022 at 4:45 for the replacement of train chiller for City Hall Building, brought to us by Councilor Smith and Berkeley Squire, Berkeley Squires are public service director. And we'll start with a report from Finance. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. We're gonna move into the easy portion of the meeting here. The, the committee heard the report when we had the bid opening, and then we referred, we voted five to zero to refer this back to the full council without a recommendation pending the committee review. And Mrs. Smith has a, a recommendation on that point to, to move on the floor tonight, because our committee has met.
Committee of two. Yes. Berkeley and I discussed it. We both went through the bid pretty thoroughly over the weekend, and it meets all the requirements that we had. We did just receive one bid from Train, and we are not doing a performance contract. We are paying for this outright with ORPA funds. And actually, the cost of the project was less than it was originally, which we were happy about. And Berkeley and I both agree that we would like to go forward with, accept this bid and move forward with the project. We're also really working on past borrowed time with our current chiller. It's been MacGyver'd as much as it can be MacGyver'd. And at this point, we're just waiting for it to go down. And since we're getting ready to head into summer, we would like to go ahead and get this new chiller on order, so that Ms. Salter doesn't swelter in this building. So my recommendation would be for us to accept the bid and move forward with the project.
All right. Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Mr. Harden. Any other questions or comments?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah, and just to, to thank, to thank the group that kind of put this all together, the final number, $1,059,063. So we're, we're almost $500,000 under, under budget by, by purchasing this outright. So I'm very excited about, about that and being able to have the, the funds to do that. So I'm looking forward to get this, getting the project started.
Absolutely. Much needed. All right. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to zero and is resolution 2256. All right. Next item, 050322. Request to install traffic calming measures along Morris Boulevard and Sterrett Avenue, brought to us by Cale Smith. This was previously reported out by Public Safety, and this time, I believe, we have a report from Finance. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The committee met on April 4th and voted five to zero to recommend approval of this item.
All right. Mr. Kendrick, can you give us a first reading?
Yes, sir. There really are two, two points to this. The first part is the resolution, and since it includes the traffic calming, which includes stop signs, we have the ordinance, which is the second part. So...
Why don't you go ahead and give us the first reading, and then we'll do both?
It's an ordinance to further regulate traffic in the city of Homewood. Be ordained as follows, that every person firm or corporation operating a motor vehicle in an ordinary direction on Morris Boulevard should cause a motor vehicle to complete stop intersection of the white ways south, white away line of Morris Boulevard, reflecting in Exhibit A. And that's the traffic calming description that you, committee, which has reviewed. Section two, every person firm or corporation operating a motor vehicle in a westy direction on the edge in place shall come to complete stop intersection, edge in place where the east of the white away line of Morris Boulevard is reflected in Exhibit A. Section three, every person firm or corporation operating a motor vehicle in a westy direction on, on Morris Boulevard shall come to complete stop intersection of Morris Boulevard with a westy white, white away line of Morris Boulevard is reflected in Exhibit A. Section four, the every person firm or corporation operating a motor vehicle in a southy direction on Sterrett Avenue shall cause a motor vehicle to come to complete stop intersection of Sterrett Avenue with a westy white away line of Morris Boulevard is reflected in Exhibit A. Section five, that no person firm or corporation shall park a motor vehicle within 30 feet of the stop signs is reflected in Exhibit A. Section six, a violation of this ordinance shall be punished as provided by section 1-8 of the Code of Ordinances upon conviction. Section seven, the chief of police shall erect or cause to be erected appropriate lines marking, no parking signs, stop signs at the intersection of places described in section 1-5 above and Exhibit A. Section eight, the provision of orders shall become effective immediately upon adoption by the City Council or approved by the mayor's, otherwise becoming law.
All right. Thank you very much. So any questions or comments with council? If not, why don't we do a motion and a second for the resolution part of this, with approval of the traffic calming measures?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Waltney, second by Ms...
This is, I think somebody came there.
I'll give it to Ms. Nelms. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is 11 to zero, and that will be resolution 2257. Now, I would entertain a motion and second for unanimous consent.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Sims, second by Ms., Ms. Gier, and roll call vote, please, Ms. Salter.
And Council Waltney?
Yes, ma'am.
Council Gier?
Yes.
Council Alamon?
Yes.
Council Wolverton?
Yes.
Council Sims?
Yes.
Council Jones?
Yes.
Council Smith?
Yes.
Council Nelms?
Yes.
Council Andrus?
Yes.
Council Harden?
Yes.
And President Wyatt?
Yes. All right. So that is 11 to zero, and now I'd entertain a motion and a second for approval.
So moved.
Second? Motion by Mr. Alamon, second by Mr. Sims, and another roll call vote, please, Ms. Salter.
And Council Waltney?
Yes, ma'am.
Council Gier?
Yes.
Council Alamon?
Yes.
Council Wolverton?
Sure.
Council Sims?
Yes.
Council Jones?
Yes.
Council Smith?
Yes.
Council Nelms?
Yes.
Council Andrus?
Yes.
Council Harden?
Yes.
And President Wyatt?
Yes. All right. So that is also 11 to zero, and will be ordinance 2833. All right. Next item, 140322. Request for consideration of funding signage for World Games to be shared with the city of Mount Brook, brought to us by Mayor McCleskey and Councilor Andrus. And we'll start with a report from Finance. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The committee voted five to zero to recommend approval of a budget amendment for $1,497.
All right. And Mr. Kendrick, this, I'm correct, this is the one that requires two resolutions? You sent one around this afternoon that ALDOT requires?
Part by ALDOT.
Okay. So we will first vote on the original resolution that came out of committee that we have a motion from Finance on. Any questions or comments? Not? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to zero, and that will be resolution 2257. Then we have the ALDOT resolution...
That's 58, I think. What, 57?
Oh, thank you, it's 58. I apologize. Thank you. Then we have the ALDOT resolution that was circulated earlier today. I would entertain a motion and a second for approval of that resolution.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion by Mr. Jones, second by Mr. Waltney. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also 11 to zero, and that one will be 2259. All right. Which brings us to 150322. Request to amend fiscal year 2122 budgets, brought to us by Berkeley Squires, Robert Riggett and Melody Salter. And we'll start with another report from Finance. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The committee met, voted five to zero to approve all the amendments for 2122 budgets. That's presented.
All right. We have a motion from Finance. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to zero, and will be resolution 2259.
60.
60, sorry. I just looked back at the fir, forgot we had two on that last one. I'm off tonight.
It's like I'm a calendar.
All right. 160322. Request for consideration for emergency purchase of one sanitation truck and amendment to fiscal year 2122 budgets, brought to us by Berkeley Squires. And another report from Finance. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The committee met, voted five to zero to recommend approval of the purchase, which is on the state bid list. So five to zero out of Finance.
All right. We have another motion from Finance. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to zero, and will be resolution 2261. Let's see, eventually I could jump in. All right. 170322. Request for consideration to surplus items no longer needed for general municipal purposes, brought to us by Debbie Fout, our library director. And another report from Finance. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir. The committee met, voted five to zero to recommend approval of this item.
All right. And we will start with a first reading. Mr. Kendrick?
Yes, sir. It's an ordinance to declare a certain property a surplus. See by established and declared that the following describe personal property of cities no longer needed for public municipal purpose, and therefore declared surplus property, property described in Exhibit A attached to the ordinance, that the mayor and the clerk be authorized and directed to dispose of the property by auction at eyes bitter.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kendrick. I would entertain a motion and a second for unanimous consent.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Sims, second by Ms. Gier, and a roll call vote, please, Ms. Salter.
Council Waltney?
Yes, ma'am.
Council Gier?
Yes.
Council Alamon?
Yes.
Council Wolverton?
Yes.
Council Sims?
Yes.
Council Jones?
Yes.
Council Smith?
Yes.
Council Nelms?
Yes.
Council Andrus?
Yes.
Council Harden?
Yes.
And President Wyatt?
Yes. All right. Now I would entertain a motion and a second for approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Sims, second by Ms. Nelms, and another roll call vote, please, Ms. Salter.
Council Waltney?
Yes, ma'am.
Council Gier?
Yes.
Council Alamon?
Yes.
Council Wolverton?
Yes.
Council Sims?
Yes.
Council Jones?
Yes.
Council Smith?
Yes.
Council Nelms?
Yes.
Council Andrus?
Yes.
Council Harden?
Yes.
And President Wyatt?
Yes. All right. So that one is also 11 to zero, and that will be ordinance 2834. Next item, 180322. Request to add additional signage to post office alleyway, brought to us by Council Waltney. And we have reports from both Finance and Public Safety. Why don't we start with Finance?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The committee met, voted five to zero to recommend approval of a one-way sign in 28th Court Alley directing to Central Court Alley, as well as a wayfinder on Central Court to return to 28th Street with an ordinance to make 27th Court Alley one-way westbound with in-house signage. Five to zero out of Finance.
All right. And a report from Public Safety. Do we have Mr. Waltney?
I did not have a, well, after hearing from Kenny on this item, the Public Safety Committee voted five to zero to send this sign back to council, with a positive recommendation.
All right. Thank you. And another first reading, Mr. Kendrick?
Yes, sir. It's an ordinance to regulate traffic on 27th Court Alley in the city of Homewood, and to provide penalties for the violation thereof. Being ordained by the city as follows, every person firm or corporation operating a motor vehicle is defined in the highway code on the 27th Court Alley shall travel in a westy direction only. Section two, that any violation of this ordinance shall be punished as provided by section 1-8 of the Code of Ordinances. Section three, the chief of police shall erect, cause to be erect appropriate lines markings as described in section one, and directional signs at the intersection of 27th Court Alley with the Central Court Alley. Section four, the provision of this order shall become effective immediately upon its passage, approved by the mayor's, otherwise becoming law.
All right. Thank you. I would entertain a motion and a second for unanimous consent.
Can I ask a quick question about that?
Yes, ma'am.
Did that reading, in that wording, did it handle the second part of what we passed out of Finance? Or, or, it was what Mr. Jones read, where we wanted a directional sign on, on Central Alley? Is that clearly stated here?
Yes, ma'am. Directional sign at the intersection of 27th Court Alley with Central Court Alley.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. That gets it. Okay. Thank you.
Sure. All right. Any other questions or comments? And I would entertain a motion and a second for unanimous consent.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Harden, second by Ms. Gier, and a roll call vote, please, Ms. Salter.
Council Waltney?
Yes, ma'am.
Council Gier?
Yes.
Council Alamon?
Yes.
Council Wolverton? Council Sims?
Yes.
Council Jones?
Yes.
Council Smith?
Yes.
Council Nelms?
Yes.
Council Andrus?
Yes.
Council Harden?
Yes.
President Wyatt?
Yes. All right. So that's 11 to zero, and now I entertain a motion and a second for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Waltney, second by Ms. Smith, and another roll call vote, please, Ms. Salter.
And Council Waltney?
Yes, ma'am.
Council Gier?
Yes.
Council Alamon?
Yes.
Council Wolverton?
Yes.
Council Sims?
Yes.
Council Jones?
Yes.
Council Smith?
Yes.
Council Nelms?
Yes.
Council Andrus?
Yes.
Council Harden?
Yes, all right, so that's eleven to zero and that will be ordinance twenty-eight thirty-five. Next item, ten oh three twenty-two, request for consideration of a complete streets ordinance brought to us by Counselors Andrus, Waltney, and Sims, and a report from public safety, Mr. Walt.
Yes, Mr. President, the committee met and voted five to zero to recommend approval of this item was made by... Where did it go? Just lost my note here, there it is, Counselor Nelms and second by Counselor Harden.
Thank you very much, and another first reading, Mr. Kendrick.
Yes, there's an ordinance adopting the city of Homewood complete streets policy, whereas the city of Homewood aims to create a comprehensive and connected transportation network, whereas the city of Homewood aims to be a livable community with enhanced mobility, equity, and vitality in all neighborhoods through the design, maintenance, and use of Homewood public right-of-way, and whereas the city desires to encourage walking bicycle traffic use as safe, convenient, and widely available modes of transportation for all people, whereas the city desires to adopt a complete street policy which is to be used as a guiding principle where practical and economic and feasible in the design, operation, maintenance of the city streets to promote safe and convenient access and travel for all users including pedestrians, bicyclists, motorists, transit riders, and people of all abilities, whereas those who travel on foot with a wheelchair or any other assisted mobility device on bicycle and on a transit as significant users of right-of-way and equally deserving of a safe and adequate transportation infrastructure, whereas complete streets provides opportunities to facilitate daily physical activity through active transportation, whereas the city's comprehensive plan identifies complete streets implementation as a strategy for ensuring Homewood's transportation system helps to build the city's economy and contributes to the development of a livable urban center in the region, and whereas the city of Homewood approved a resolution endorsing complete streets in May of two thousand twelve, and whereas city's developing a complete street ordinance was recommended as a policy priority for additional action by the two thousand and eighteen City of Homewood master plan, whereas the city of Homewood supports implementation, a freshwater land trust, a red rock trail system, and corresponding plan which includes recommendations for a comprehensive trail network comprised of sidewalks, bike lanes, and trails, and whereas the planning document to further guide complete streets decisions include be active plan for the regional planning commission of Greater Birmingham Transit Development Plan for the Birmingham Jefferson Transit Authority, whereas the city of Homewood supports safe routes to schools which aims to create safe, convenient, and fun opportunities for children to bicycle or walk to and from school, and whereas the city has values of innovation in transportation planning and strives to be a better leader in regional policymaking, whereas the city finds the adoption of a complete street policy is in the best interest of the city to achieve a comprehensive connected network which will promote public health, safety, and welfare of all citizens. Therefore, there being ordained as follows, section one defines the complete street policy, section two defines the applicability of the policy, section three defines the guiding principles and practices, section four deals with the design flexibility, section five deals with exceptions provided by the ordinance, section six deals with a priority network, section seven deals with implementation, section eight deals with the performance measures, section nine deals with effective date, and section ten deals with separability of the ordinance.
All right, thank you very much, any questions or comments? I entertain a motion and a second for unanimous consent.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Smith.
Second.
Second by Ms. Andrus, and a roll call vote please, Ms. Salter.
Counselor Waltney?
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Gear?
Yes.
Counselor Alamon?
Yes.
Counselor Wolverton?
Yes.
Counselor Sims?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Nelms?
Yes.
Counselor Andrus?
Yes.
Counselor Harden?
Yes.
And President Wyatt.
Yes, all right, so that's eleven to zero and now I entertain a motion and a second for approval.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Nelms, second by Ms. Gear. Ms. Salter, we're making you earn your money tonight, one more roll call vote please.
You're getting your money's worth. Counselor Waltney?
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Gear?
Yes.
Counselor Alamon?
Yes.
Counselor Wolverton?
Yes.
Counselor Sims?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Nelms?
Yes.